Okay, good evenings ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our May 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Our first meeting together in over a year. This is quite different. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Amber, can you do a roll call?
Wendy Birmingham.
Here.
Robin Bridges.
Here.
Phil Chancellor.
Here.
Jana Jaeger. Mac Lazenby.
Here.
Marcus Marshall.
Here.
Warren McCord.
Here.
Nonette Reese.
Here.
Bob Brightenbaugh.
Here.
Okay, before we get started, I'd just like to go over the process that we'll be going through here tonight, since we have a number of people from the public here. And so, the commission's going to be presented with agenda items by the planning department. And then, the representative for the item will have an opportunity to make comments if they'd like to. And then, I'll open a public hearing if it's appropriate, because some items do not require a public hearing. And this will be your opportunity to address the commission about an item that's at hand. We want everybody to be heard, and we ask that you keep your comments to five minutes. And please, keep the comments relevant to the issue at hand. After everyone has spoken, I'm going to close the public hearing. The representative and staff will then have an opportunity to answer any questions that may have come up during the public hearing. And then, I'll open the floor to the commissioners for motions, discussion, and a vote. The commission will vote based on state and local laws, the city's comprehensive plan 2030, and for the general good of the community. Additionally, I'd like to summarize our role with, that's related to the approval of subdivision plats, because we are the, by Alabama statute, the municipal planning commission, such as ours, is the final authority for subdivision plats for their approval. With regard to the plats, the commission acts as an administrative body and is bound by the limitations contained in state laws, city zoning ordinance, and the subdivision regulations that we have adopted previously. While the public hearings are required for these plats, and we welcome any and all public comments concerning these items, please understand that the commission's authority is strictly limited to confirming that the plat meets or exceeds certain requirements codified by laws and the regulations I previously mentioned. Finally, I would like to make a point that specifically for the public that's in attendance now, as you know, the Planning Commission is only an advisory body for the city council. And except in the case of subdivision plat decisions, the city council makes all final decisions upon whatever recommendation we forward to them. So, there will be another chance to address most of these items that we will cover tonight. But this time, I'm going to open up the floor for citizens' communication. Now, this is a time where if you would like to speak about anything that is not on the agenda at all, that's one subject you can speak on. The other is if you have anything you'd like to say about the consent agenda items. In those, we have the meeting minutes, and then, we have an annexation. We also have a final plat approval and a waiver to a bond extension. Would anybody like to come forward to speak about any of those? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. We have no old business. And that brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda tonight includes the packet meeting minutes of April 5th, 2021, the regular meeting minutes of April 8th, the Roswell Smith annexation, which is PL 2021-00243. The second consent agenda item is Camden South Phase 1, PL 2021-00246, which is the final plat approval, and Yarborough Farms Club Creek Bond Extension, PL 2021-00249, which is a waiver to a bond extension. Now, look for a motion from the...
Yeah, Ms. Chairman, I'd make a motion we approve the three numbered items on the consent agenda and the minutes at the packet meeting of April 5th and the regular meeting of April 8th.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. Consent agenda carries, and we'll move up to new business. The first item, which is a zoning ordinance amendment, PL 2021-0238. This is a recommendation for city council to adjust some of the amendments in our zoning ordinance. Ms. Robison.
Thank you, Phil. Glad everyone is here tonight in person. It's good to see everybody. The first item on tonight's agenda is an amendment to the short-term rental regulations that were passed earlier this year. And when they were approved, there's two portions that are being amended. Adding two definitions to the zoning ordinance, as well as amending the home occupation section, which governs home stays, a particular type of short-term rental. One of the stipulations of home occupations is that the business cannot occupy more than 25% or 500 square feet of the residence. And we are adding, with the exception of home stays, to that clause. And the second one for home occupations is the parking requirement. For home occupations, the businesses have to park on-site. And we are also requiring that for short-term rentals, for the home occupations. However, if it cannot all be met for home stays on-site, they can park on the street. So, those are those two items for home occupations. And the two definitions are lodging and transient occupancy. And if you'll recall, I moved to remove transient occupancy when this first went through before. But at the time, it ties back to lodging, which was not considered. So, this is the first time adding the definition of lodging. And that's really to draw the distinction between short-term rentals as being lodging and residential occupancy, which is a dwelling. So, it's separating the uses. One is a commercial use and one is residential. And that is the gist of the amendments. And I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. All right, this requires a public hearing. So, I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. Would anybody like to come forward and speak on these amendments? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and ask for motion and discussion.
I move to approve PL 2021-00238.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Okay, motion carries. Okay, item number five, Links Crossing Phase 4 rezoning, PL 2021-00234. Ms. Kennedy.
Good evening. This is a request from Tom Haley on behalf of Links Crossing LLC to rezone approximately 8.06 acres from the rural zoning district to the DDH, which is the development district housing. The request is to make the zoning more in line with the future development of the existing subdivision that you can see in this prox map here. This is the area showing the area to be rezoned in relation to existing and in-progress lots. Aerial showing that it's previously part of the Auburn Links Crossing Golf Course. We've not received any communication regarding this case, and I'm not sure...
I don't see Mr. Haley.
Don't believe the applicant is available.
Yeah, I don't see him. Okay, this does require a public hearing. Would anybody like to come forward and speak on this item? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for motions or comments from the commission.
Well, I move that Links Crossing Phase 4 be recommended for approval to rezone from rural to development. I mean, yeah, to rezone to District, well, Development District Housing.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. As the motion is to approve this rezoning from rural to DDH. Can we have a roll call?
Robin Bridges.
Yes.
Phil Chancellor.
Yes.
Mac Lazenby.
Yes.
Marcus Marshall.
Yes.
Warren McCord.
Yes.
Nonette Reese.
Yes.
Bob Brightenbaugh.
Yes.
Wendy Birmingham.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. On to item number six, same property. This is Links Crossing Phase 4, PL 2021-00182. This is a preliminary plat approval.
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy.
This request also comes from Tom Haley on behalf of Links Crossing LLC. It's a request to have a 38-lot conventional subdivision in the area shown here, portion of which is in the area to be rezoned. Here is the lot layout, showing the future lots. It connects to a previous phase, which is under construction now. We have not received any comments or contact from the public on this, and we are recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this also requires a public hearing. Would anybody like to come forward and speak on this? Right, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for motion or comments from the commission.
Okay, if there's no comment, I'll move to approve PL 2021-00182 with any and all staff comments.
Second.
Motion is second, no further discussion.
Question, yeah, let me ask. In our comprehensive land use plan, one of the goals in circulation is the reduction of cul-de-sacs. Not the elimination of, but the reduction of. Is there some way, when we get submitted these smaller sections, that we could get an idea of where the tie-ins go? Like on Iron Street or on Bunker Drive? I would like staff to try to see what the future may look like instead of getting these small pieces put together with a lot of cul-de-sacs. It may be if we looked at a larger picture, some of them could be connected in a little better circulation.
So, one of the first items in our process for a subdivision is the need for a lot layout. And so, a lot of applicants will bring that to us in sort of the preliminary ideas of what they want to do. However, that is non-binding, so we are never really sure until it comes in those phases.
I know you're doing your best. I just encourage you to get as much of that information as possible. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to point out that there's going to be an interesting situation here in that portion of this subdivision is going to be in CDD. Is that correct?
Yes. That is correct.
So, that means then, and the zone in which these lots reside is not part of a plat when one buys a lot. So, it's, I'm just pointing it out that unless they come in and ask for rezoning, you're going to have some potential conflicts within a subdivision, because one allows a lot more different uses than the other one zone.
The recommendation to rezone was made. However, single-family residential is permitted in CDD, so it is a permitting zone.
Yeah, it is a permitting zone.
Or it's not required to rezone it.
But what you've got is, well, an example in the short-term rental situation, some of those houses will be in the zone that allows it and others won't.
Right. And with the short-term rentals, we also left that up to the HOA to provide that language in their covenants on whether they see fit to do that. So, I think that that would also restrict it, should they see fit for that CDD portion.
We'll see.
Further discussion? Okay, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Robin Bridges.
Yes.
Phil Chancellor.
Yes.
Mac Lazenby.
Yes.
Marcus Marshall.
Yes.
Warren McCord.
Yes.
Nonette Reese.
Yes.
Bob Brightenbaugh.
Yes.
Wendy Birmingham.
Yes.
Okay, on to item number seven, the landings at Academy Drive. This is PL 2021-00110, a preliminary plat approval request. Jay Howell.
I'm not quite as tall as Jay, but...
You're the wrong Jay Howell.
Sorry.
Logan Kip instead.
This is a preliminary plat request from Perryman Hill LLC. Their authorized representative is Edgar Houston Builders Incorporated. It is a plat request for a 97-lot conventional subdivision on 39.45 acres. You previously heard an annexation and rezoning request at your March meeting to annex this land in and rezone to DDH, as well as a rezoning request to rezone this to DDH. Here is the proposed subdivision. The least got academy would be located approximately in this area. They're proposing to extend Academy Drive through as a thoroughfare, which would eventually connect to other potential road connections. Staff is recommending approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Representative the applicant present, they would like to say anything? Okay, thanks. Okay, this requires a public hearing, so at this time, I'll open the public hearing. And anybody that would like to come forward, please do. All right, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. Ask for comments or motion from the commission.
Ms. Chairman, I'd move to approve item seven on the agenda.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Robin Bridges.
Yes.
Phil Chancellor.
Yes.
Mac Lazenby.
Yes.
Marcus Marshall.
Yes.
Warren McCord.
Yes.
Nonette Reese.
Yes.
Bob Brightenbaugh.
Yes.
Wendy Birmingham.
Yes.
Okay, item number eight, George Bedell lands, PL 2021-00235, a preliminary plat approval. Ms. Entrican.
Hi, everyone. The applicant here is requesting preliminary plat approval for a consolidation of seven lots into one. The subject property is located between Railroad Avenue and Glen Avenue, and they are zoned UNW, surrounded mostly by UNW with CRD W to the north. It consists of approximately 1.8 acres, and we've received several inquiries just asking for information, but no comments in favor or opposing. And staff recommends approval.
Thank you. So, representative from the applicant would like to speak?
Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this requires a public hearing, and I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anybody would like to come forward, please do. And after you're done, can you sign up over here on the right on the appropriate board? There's one for each issue tonight.
I'm Ray Huff. I'm representing the owner of Heritage Park Limited at 623 West Glen. First, we just have one question, is what's the purpose of this project? I mean, is it a large student housing project? Is it a subdivision? Do we know?
Subdivision.
Subdivision.
That's what...
Eighteen downtown.
Okay, that's all we wanted to know. Thank you.
That was easy. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Didn't we get an email or something late today on this item?
We did.
I did give one.
It was in opposition to or requested. Yeah, okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay. Many comments, motion from the commission?
Ms. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve item eight on the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Can we have a roll call, please? Amber?
Robin Bridges.
Yes.
Phil Chancellor.
Yes.
Mac Lazenby.
Yes.
Marcus Marshall.
Yes.
Warren McCord.
Yes.
Nonette Reese.
Yes.
Bob Brightenbaugh.
Yes.
Wendy Birmingham.
Yes.
Okay, on to item number nine. This is a final plat approval with the same property, and this is PL 2021-00236. This does not require a public hearing.
Yes, so, this is the same property, and they are seeking final plat approval. I think it is a consolidation, so nothing will change. Staff recommends approval for this as well.
Okay. All right, discussion or motion?
Move to approve PL 2021-00236 with any and all staff comments.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Okay, on to item number 10, North Dean Town Homes, PL 2021-00244, recommendation to city council for conditional use approval of a performance residential development. Mr. Kip.
Yes, sir. This is a condition use request for a multiple-unit development. The property owner is Swan Investments LLC, and they're represented by Pinnacle Design Group Incorporated. The subject property is highlighted here in the prox map. It consists of the Craftmasters Building, as well as other office uses located in the forward part of the building. The Craftmaster printer is essentially a warehouse and commercial support use. So, the proposal is to create 25 potentially condo townhouse-style units in the rear of the property, running along the detention pond. The proposed access would be off of the existing driveway for Craftmaster printers, and they would come through the back here and access the back of the property that way. The multiple-unit developments are conditional in CDD, which is why this request is before you tonight. There are other uses that are permitted by right, that are commercial uses and office uses that are permitted by right. The future land use designation for the property is Office Park, which contemplates a mixture of commercial and office spaces or uses. As such, staff is recommending denial of this request as it does not conform to the comprehensive plan. And I did receive three, I think it's just a closer in view of the proposed development. I did receive three emails in opposition to this condition use request. And the authorized representative is here, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Good to see you after a year. Good to see you after a year. Yes, sir. Good to see you too, in person.
Really?
Yeah. Logan's got a few slides we wanted to show. Do I have a clicker, or do I just need to tell you?
You can get that.
So, incompatibility seems to be the issue here. And we just wanted to show some other examples of similar situations in town where there are residential units adjacent to other uses, high-intensity uses. And it has worked. They've sold their thriving residential developments. This first one here is across from the Auburn University Credit Union. You've got Dollar General right there beside it. Let me see if I can... There we go. This just shows the land uses.
That's Cross Street. I can't make it. I'm trying to figure out where that's at.
Onahue.
Onahue, okay.
Yeah, and I think there's Pet Palace or something there across the street also. Here are some photos of those townhomes right on University. You can see all of those have contracts on them. They're right there on the road with the road noise and lights. In that right-hand photo, you can see Dollar General in the proximity to those townhomes. This photo is taken from... This photo is taken from the front door of the bank. You can see right into the townhomes there. This next section is midtown. I'm sure all of you are familiar with that, where you've got residential actually on the second floor of retail restaurants that are open late at night, have a lot of deliveries. Over on the right-hand side of the photo, you see residential units literally 15 feet from a retail use. In the right-hand photo, you can see from the road Mike's merchandise and those townhomes. This is Gatewood Plaza. There are Gatewood Townhomes that are, you see under construction in the photo. This one's very similar to what we're proposing. You've got the pond, you've got office use around it. You've got commercial uses, retail right there beside the townhomes that are all visible from the townhomes. The left photo is taken from an office area. You can see the townhomes in the background. The right photo is the back of, you see that under construction, the back of a retail building right there by the townhome. Some more photos taken from the office towards the townhome. And then that's taken from Gatewood Plaza, looking back at the townhomes. This is the subject site, the vicinity of the subject site. You see the pond right there in the middle and surrounded by. Of course, Dean Road is a successful office development. All the office is in yellow. You've got Twin Forks Townhomes that are right there, basically in the office development, with office directly across the street from it. And then the lower townhome section is where we're proposing the townhomes. I don't know if y'all get a chance to go to these sites when you see them on the agenda. I don't know how many of you have been able to go ride back there. But it's, it's very secluded. There are no restaurants around. There are no big trucks and deliveries and parking lot lights and so forth. If, as a matter of fact, if you go out there at night, all you hear is crickets and bullfrogs, and it's so dark, you can't even take photos. It's, it's a very private and secluded area that we think would, would make great home sites. This is just some photos of Twin Forks. And you can see in the right-hand photo, the office building on the left and the townhomes on the right. Same thing there, office on the left, townhomes right across the street. And then this is from behind Craftmaster, looking out at the site that we're proposing. So we just wanted to kind of show you some other examples of where townhomes and residential uses have worked in town, adjacent to busy areas. And I believe this one is in contrast to those, as it is much more quiet and secluded than some of those other areas. The developer is here tonight, and I think he wants to speak. Would you like him to come up now or wait till the public hearing?
I think we're okay for right now. He, we'll talk, just have a public hearing, and then we'll go from there.
So have him come up now?
I want to have a public hearing first.
Okay, sure. Yeah, I'll be glad to answer any other questions that anybody has.
Thank you. Okay, this requires a public hearing, so at this time, if you would like to come forward and speak, please do. I ask if, after you're done, if you can sign up over here on the side. There's a couple of boards over there with some papers on it, if you can sign your name on it and your address. So if you give your name and address and.
All right. I'll be happy to. I'm Scott Sprayberry. I'm an orthodontist here in Auburn. I've been here since 1999, and for 20 years or so, I've owned a lot that is right across the pond from the proposed development. And so although it will be quiet at night, that's quite a busy commercial district during the day. There's three lanes of traffic there on North Dean Road. And when I purchased that lot, I'm sure that it was told me this is a commercial district. And it was told me that we want to make this a nice commercial district, a nice area. And at the time, I still have a picture of it, there was hardly anybody on that street. And so being a recent graduate of UAB, I was very nervous. You know, buying that lot, I rented space for about four or five years in an ophthalmology building here in Auburn while I got my patient base going. And finally decided to take the step to build. And when I built, since I'd been in an ophthalmology building with no windows, because our doctors like to keep things dark, I told our architect, please have a lot of windows. I got to have some sunlight. I've been five years working in the dark. I didn't know if there was a thunderstorm or if there was sunshine. So to my request, there's 15 windows right along the back of my orthodontic practice. And some of y'all have, I think, been there. But throughout most of my day, I'm in that back clinic area, myself and my, a lot of my staff and my patients, and we overlooked that pond. So it was really just Monday when I first saw, or I opened that certified letter, and I knew anything about there was going to be proposed 25 townhouses built in that area right across the pond. So between patients last few days and just, I've got four kids trying to read some on zoning and all. It's very complicated. I can't remember what it's on, CDD, I believe, which I did find in a local newspaper, that it was said by a city official, as I was trying to figure out CDD, this is close to a commercial zone as Auburn's got, it seems. And y'all correct me if I'm wrong, we don't really have a commercial district, which I can understand, being a city, we need to have some flexibility. We're not Manhattan, I guess, where you have a set commercial zone. But that was a commercial area. I know when I purchased my lot two years ago, having built there about '04 or '05, I made the decision to renovate the entire exterior of my building, the entire interior, because I felt so great about the area that I'm in. It's turned in from, I can still see it like it was yesterday. I've got a picture somewhere in my house when there was just, I don't know, just a very few offices. And now it's grass. So I built there, and I felt like it was a big gamble. I'll be honest, I didn't know what I was doing. I just bought that building. And then all these other dentists and doctor offices start setting up on North Dean Road. And I think it's turned into just a really nice area. And so I have real concerns about if this passes. It's going to decrease my property value and my neighbor's property value. And over time, this development, it's, I don't know if you could tell on the map or if any of y'all, but the way you get to it is you turn in at Craftmasters Printer, and you actually drive into their business drive. And then you go through their parking lot next to what was described as a warehouse. And then you end up in this proposed development. That's just not a good access. You know, for something to work, you really don't want to start out going through somebody's parking lot. And because of it being said as a commercial, initially, that was the idea, because of the poor access, I have real concerns in 20, 30, 10 years how the back of those 15 townhouses are going to look as I look out, you know, over my pond. I've had the joy, just this week, my son's in pre-dentistry at Auburn University. He's going to be a junior. And he, he may want to do what I do. I don't know, that's a long way off, but he is about to be a junior at Auburn. He's working with me. He seems to really like it. He loves Auburn. He may want to come back. So it's just an extra appeal that this, this has been a huge investment for myself and to, you know, get the practice started. And I want to appeal to your sense, I've never done anything like this, just your sense of fairness toward myself, and I know I have some other dentists in the community that, that are on that same street. I know they're going to make that same appeal. But I'll, I'll just close as I thought through this, what I was going to say really today. One reason we love living in Auburn is things really make sense here to me most of the time. And I appreciate that. I think people in Auburn have the ability to try to do what's best 10, 20, and 30 years down the road. Ever since I've lived in town, we've had these long-range plans. And so I just make the appeal that, that you would consider in 20 and 30 years how this complex will look on the other side of that pond, when we already have had such a successful commercial and professional area. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
You've got to sign this.
Yeah, sign in, please. Anybody else? Come on up.
You said you wanted a little history?
Name, name and address.
I'm Jeff Clary. I live on Windway Road for 40 years, close to Oakl tree school.
That sounds like great history.
Oh. Worked for Auburn University for 30 years, if you can imagine, around Warren McCord for 30 years. I've been selling real estate for 20 years. I am the listing agent on that lot. That lot does not have Dean Road frontage, which for a retail, a nice business, a drugstore, a, any kind of business that wants walk-in traffic, it doesn't have it. So there's not a lot of uses for that piece of property. We've had it listed for quite a while, and they didn't mention it, but they're going to market to non-students. It's not going to be a fraternity row Saturday night place. There's not a whole lot of rental out there in the townhouse and condo areas for non-students in Auburn. And not to mention the tax incentive it would be for the city of Auburn. That's it. Do you have any questions?
Can I, can I ask you for some more history?
Okay.
Then how did this problem get created? How did this large parcel get landlocked behind a warehouse?
I'm going to take a shot and say when Craftmasters was built on that large lot and the lay of it, where they put the building, and then the back is kind of their equipment machinery down like a lower floor. The easy way to get in there was the way they're using through the driveway. If you go to the right, to go around the right side, it's just, it's just not very, it's not doable. You, I mean, with enough money and enough moving dirt, you could do it that way. But it just worked out over the years.
So the, the property is, is currently owned by Craftmaster, and then your client is proposing to buy it? Is that what it is?
It's owned by a group called Swan Investments. There are eight people involved.
Well, I, I guess I'm just concerned that it's not the public's responsibility to solve a problem that wasn't created by, by the public.
We didn't say it was a problem.
Oh, well.
We just said it didn't have road frontage.
The fact is landlocked is what is the problem.
The property's not landlocked.
No.
No, the property's not, but the, the development will be, other than access through the commercial.
Let's, let's have this discussion after the public hearing. All right, thank you.
Any more questions?
No, sir.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else like to speak? Come on. Oh, please sign in if you don't mind. There's a chart over there.
My name is John Hutton. I'm a period dentist in, on North Dean. Actually, my office is in the shadow of Dr. Sprayberry. And so he's blocked out a little of my sunlight, but I won't go there. You know, for many of the reasons, I think that, first gentleman that's.
Can you address the commission, please?
Well, I forgot his name. I was just saying, I was pointing him out. I think for many of the reasons that he indicated that that's a desirable piece of property is specifically why that, that property is probably much more appealing to what was outlined by Dr. Sprayberry by talking about. This is generally a row of healthcare, office buildings, doesn't rely on a lot of foot traffic, doesn't rely on a lot of walk-in traffic. Most dental offices, most medical offices don't rely on a lot, a lot of foot traffic. You know, some of the other examples that were pointed out earlier, those are near retail areas that rely a lot more on foot traffic. I think that's consideration. You know, that's a, that is certainly a nice piece of property. My office too looks over the lake, and, and over the last, I guess, six to 12 months, I'm not sure when it was, that property got, all the, the woods, the trees got taken down, and it was kind of flattened. We didn't know really what was going on with that. It's particularly a perfect area for further medical offices, dental offices, healthcare, things that don't require a lot of, a lot of traffic. This is going to, as has already been pointed out, the access to this goes through that business. That's a, that's a driveway, essentially. That kind of traffic spilling out on the Dean Road, there's already considerable traffic on that road. This is going to do nothing but escalate that. I'm not going to go and restate everything they've said, but I think that there's a lot of truth that that is a desirable piece of property for anybody. It's quiet, it's nice. I think most of the time when people are coming for healthcare, you know, they want a serene setting. They don't want something that looks like it's real busy, real active. You know, this, going to the dentist creates a lot of anxiety to start with, to say the least. And so, you know, that, I think that's a consideration. This is a park that is kind of, kind of more addressed and stipulated for, for healthcare. One of the reasons I went there in 2004 and plan on staying there. Thank you.
Hey, thanks. Please sign in. Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm Will King. I'm a general dentist that's.
Give me your address, too? I forgot to ask the gentleman.
My address.
Name and address for the record.
754 North Dean.
Okay, thanks.
I'm basically across the street from Sprayberry and next to everybody else. I just, I bought that lot in, the lot that I built on in 2006 as a, basically a medical office park. And that's essentially what we signed up for. And so that's kind of what I think all of us would like it to stay as. One of the examples that David put up there, Twin Forks, went in sort of against everybody that's here on that street's opinion. And in fact, y'all actually, may not be the same group of people, but actually told the city council, you didn't approve of that going in either. There's a reason for that. When you sign up for an office park, it should stay an office park. That's all I've got.
Good, thank you. All right.
I'm Alan Thames. My office is 719 North Dean Road. I'm right adjacent to the Craftmasters. If you're looking at Craftmasters, I'm just to the right. And I bought that lot in 2014 and built, you know, similar to Scott. You know, I bought that lot and kind of was renting another place on the street. And then in 2016 or 15, we built that building and moved in 2016. And the reason we're on that street is because it's a medical park. That's where we want to be. That's where, you know, I've been there now for five, been on that street for 15 years now, and that building for five years, and I plan on being there for, you know, foreseeable future. And I just don't feel like this development is in keeping with the zoning ordinances. Just like Logan said, I mean, that's why we have these zones, you know? And so to me, it's, you know, want to appeal to your, to your, to our laws, and that's why we have these laws. That's why we have these zones, so that, you know, some people want to contest those. And so myself and my colleagues have to come down here after work, you know, and say, hey, we think we need to stand up for what these zones, why we have these zones in the first place. And this is a medical park, and we feel like it should stay a medical park. And we just don't feel like this apartments are in keeping with the, the rest of the subdivision. And those two, the three examples that he gave with the other, you know, what he said were successful areas, none of those were in medical parks. There weren't any medical parks around those. So I would contest that those were not examples that could be likened to this same area. Also, this, they're asking for the zone for the whole, this, this lot is like over eight acres. acres, and they're asking for the whole zone to be changed in the whole eight acres. They're not just asking just for that back parcel right now. So my concern would be that we know what would happen there in the future if they, if we granted that whole thing now. So my appeal is just that, you know, we will uphold our zoning laws like they are, and I recommend, and what Logan said, is denial of that, and I'm just here to express our objection to everything.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm TJ Fuquay. I'm at 747 North Dean. We are two doors down from Dr. Sprayberry, and I have an empty lot between myself and Dr. Tames. So we're all neighbors, you're kind of catching the trend of what's happening here. So we're all pretty much in agreement that we don't feel like this fits the intended use, you know, for this area. It's a medical park, it's something that when we all bought in, we thought was going to stay that way, and that's being attempted to change. I know that these are being marketed to families, I would think, starter families and that sort of thing, but I'm not sure that you can police that. You can market it however you want to, but if there are 25 of them and only five of them sell to families, I'm pretty sure the other 20 of students want them will be in them. And then I echo the same concern about traffic. It gets pretty crazy in the mornings and around 5:00 on North Dean, so I don't know that adding that many residences is going to help that problem a whole lot. Also, I echo what Dr. Tame said in the fact that my concern is, is that if that whole area is rezoned, that we could go from 25 condos to 75 really quick if Craft Masters is bulldozed, and now that's a whole, whole lot of traffic. So just wanted to express my views on that, and thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Hey, I'm Amy Fisher, and we are at 986 Drew Lane, which is the cul-de-sac. So we're around the pond directly across from where this would go, and we also would be in opposition to this happening for all of the reasons that everybody said. I don't need to say them again.
Okay, appreciate that, thank you.
Nice to see you all. I'm Ken Zuhari. I'm an oral surgeon that practices with TJ Fuquay at 747 North Dean, which is three lots down from Craft Masters. I guess I'm here to express my opposition to this plan. As being the planning commissioner, we all had plans when we came into this medical park that was zoned as commercial, not residential, and we went on that plan as we planned our own buildings, and we believe that that plan should hold and that it should not be changed. This proposition or proposal violates the comprehensive development plan for the city of Auburn, and we'd like to stand by the existing plan and oppose any change to it.
Thanks, sir. Oh, no, sir, you get to wait for just a second if you're a representative. Yeah, well, come on, come on, sir. That's probably appropriate. Just give us a, if you're going to, you have five minutes.
My name's Tony Hyatt. I preside at 755 Moores Mill Road, Auburn. I'd like to address some of the opposition and also point out some of my vision that I had with this concept. First of all, this is not a rezon. This is a conditional use for the zoning that exists. This is not a medical park. Auburn reprint pro over there is not a medical, Craft Masters is not a medical. This is a commercial use. Jewelry store over there, they're not medical, so it's not.
Office park is.
Right, it's not a medical park, which they continue to say. Central Park has an HOA. Any concerns about upkeep and whatnot can be controlled through the HOA, and that can be discussed with this proposed use and possible make some additional requirements of upkeep. But I wanted to say a couple other things again about my vision on the property is comprehensive plans are great to have. That's why I moved here, is Auburn had a plan, but demands and needs change, and comprehensive plans have to change as well. The way we live has changed forever. The way businesses conduct their activities every day has changed forever due to COVID. What's the next pandemic? What's going to change? You cannot sit here and hold a hammer down on a decision that was made 10 years ago for 20 years later. Those have to be considered and modified and tweaked accordingly. If we continue to hold our foot down on what was supposed to have been here, we may end up with a bunch of abandoned properties because it don't work anymore. But moving for my vision on this property is this. We have a professional office space use up on Dean Road. Notice, they didn't buy this particular property. It was available. They all bought up on Dean Road because that is where you want exposure to conduct your business. I'm trying to bring them customers that can walk to their dentist, walk to the drugstore, walk to the, you know, orthodontist or whatever. I'm not trying to bring competition, which nobody needs competition in today's world to stay in business. My concept that I'm considering to propose again is a central condominium park. This could be of a, you know, like they said, it's nice and quaint down there. It's not like what has been approved previously up there on the road. Not very appealing with the backside of townhome bumped right up on a curb. This is tucked out of the way, out of sight, and it adjoins multifamily on the other side of it. And this concept is desirable for their employees. They could walk to work, they could walk home for lunch. This is the vision that I have, is I understand they continue to talk about the access to get back there, but what if I were to go back there and build contractor storage warehousing? They're going to have to look at that, and they're still going to have to come by that same access. I don't think that this is a problem. This could become more of a nuisance to them than this could ever with the wrong development. That is allowed without coming in front of you guys. They need to consider that. I'm talking about putting in 25 more owners to participate in HOA fees to help maintain that lake, help maintain the common areas. It would be more of an asset than what they're okay with. We could go back there and build office space with warehouse storage with contractors. They've got tools scattered around, coming up and out of that same access all day long, you know? They don't want to look at that, and I wouldn't. What I'm proposing would be an asset to them in more ways than one. Property value, customer base, and concept. Their employees could walk, not have to pay these high gas prices, wear and tear on cars, not miss traffic that we continue to have around here. It's going to get worse. They could be home in two minutes. I mean, there's other considerations for this project than what is being, I hope I'm bringing some pointers out for them to consider, because it could be a lot worse. And I'm up for a roundtable discussion to work together. This is my investment as well. I'm willing to put my life on the line for it, I believe in it. And the accessibility, there's, there's some options there as well. I don't know how to work this clicker, but, you know, you could come, you're going to have to come off that access. No matter what goes back there, it's going to have to do it. And as you come down, I don't know how to do this thing, but there's a way to, as that entrance comes and angles, we could possibly go to the sellers and negotiate a deal to where the far-left access would come and tie in up there, right there, and curb up where you cannot come right beside that building. My goal and vision was to do that initially and come and swing in, and the entrance is coming right between those two big magnolia trees. That, they're going to stay. That would be the entrance as they come into their little community. 25, 25 is the most, maybe going to be less, but 25 is it. That will be their own little private quaint setting to walk to work, come home, have plenty of common area, there's a lot of common area right there on the pond, drag a, you know, a chair out there and go sit and enjoy, watch the sun go down or whatever. I mean, it's, it's just more things to consider than with them thinking it's going to be a nuisance, because it actually, their concerns is right, and they should be concerned, but they need to be concerned what could go there other than this. And I'm up for any questions now, or I can come back a little later.
That's, that's a public hearing. You can tell us what you think, and we're listening to you, and.
I got you.
Your time's about up, though.
Yes, sir. Only thing I say is I'm, I'm not asking for any variances, I'm not asking for any architectural facade considerations. I'm willing to work with the city, I'm willing to work with the surrounding property owners to make this a success for everybody and the city as well. So I hope that there could be some consideration for it.
Thank you. Can you sign in, please? Anybody else? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And let's get a motion on the table before we have any kind of discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I, a lot of your email and the conversations we've had before about how to make these motions, I know how to make the motion I'd like to make, and I think it'd be appropriate. I don't think it's against Robert's Rules of Order, but I don't want to go against your request today, but under discussion, I don't think this ought to be approved because it is contrary to our comprehensive land use plan.
So do you have a motion, and then we can discuss?
Well, I, I'm in a little bit of a tight. If somebody else knows better how.
I move to approve. A second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve this recommendation to city council. Now let's have that discussion.
I, I'm not going to vote in favor of the motion because I think it's in, it's in conflict with the comprehensive land use plan, but that's my privilege and my choice, and I don't mean to influence anybody else, but it's a little convoluted to make a motion one way, and I understand, and I appreciate your making that motion, and hopefully we can get a little work sessions or something and maybe resolve this issue a little.
Oh, we will.
A little bit better if we can, if we can do that, because it's, it's convoluted and it's.
Now, the developer made one comment that I do agree with, and that is plans do change. We are on schedule to, when, when are we scheduled now to?
Every five, every five years.
Every five years, but when's the next?
This year.
This year.
This year. So we are, we are not locked into a plan for eternity. We do make our changes based on the changes that are taking place throughout the community. So the fact that it is, you know, without any further study, I would be hesitant to vote for it in the fact that it does not meet our land use plan, and it is a rather abrupt insert into a situation that is complicated.
Call a question, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I, just, I know this is the last second, but I'm actually going to recuse myself from this, from this matter, and I'm not going, I'm going to abstain from voting. So just letting you know that, so, for the record.
All right, so, well, let's, since there's no further discussion, let's have a roll call vote, please. The motion is to approve the recommendation to the city council for the conditional use approval of this performance residential development.
Robin Bridges?
No.
Councillor?
No.
Mac Lazenby?
No.
Warren McCord?
No.
Annette Reese?
No.
Bob Brightenbaugh?
No.
Wendy Birmingham?
No.
Okay, the motion fails to pass. Let's go on to item number 11. This is Graduate Auburn, PL 2020 00223. This is a recommendation for an extension of a conditional use approval that was previously granted and does not require a public hearing. Mr. Kip?
Yes, sir. This is, as you stated, back in May of 2020, the planning commission recommended approval for a conditional use application of a hotel known as the Graduate Hotel, located at, I don't know if I have an address here.
202 West Magnolia?
202 West Magnolia, thank you. It was subsequently approved by city council, and their approval was set to, or is set to expire on November 19th of 2021. The reason stated for the delay in design and construction of the hotel has been due to COVID-19 pandemic, and essentially not, you know, not being an opportune time to construct a hotel downtown. For that reason, they are requesting a six-month extension, and staff recommends approval of this extension. And if you so choose to approve it, it would go on to city council for affirmation, and the project engineer is available if you have any questions.
Okay, this doesn't require a public hearing, so is there a motion?
Move to approve, PL 2021 00223.
Second.
Have a motion to second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. That brings us to the end of our meeting. Is there anything from staff?
No, sir, but I will let you guys know when we do get a, a meeting together where we can discuss the Robert's Rules.
All right, the meeting is adjourned.
So good to see everybody.
Yep, it's great to see everybody live and in person.